They're here, yeah. Just make sure they're on, are they ready?
Are you good for us to go?
Awesome.
Thank you, everybody. Welcome. Tonight's meeting is July 19th, Tuesday the 19th, the school committee meeting. I'd like to call to order and have an approval of the agenda, please.
So move.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. May I see if there's any comments from the public? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, so last week, Dr. Jennifer Raebold and I, who's probably trying to get in the door. Yes, she is.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, not a bad idea. Hi, Esmeralda.
It's a testament to safety and security.
Nope, that's okay, it should. I'll wait one moment if that's okay.
Sure.
Great.
I know, it was such an easy.
Well, I'm glad it wouldn't work, so I was back there, then I got stuck. I was behind you guys. And I was in my car making a phone call. And then when I tried to get in, I was like, I couldn't. So then I had to leave, go around, stuck in traffic.
Okay.
Okay.
Shall I continue? Yeah, no worries. Okay, so I'm going to report a little bit on the MASSS Executive Institute. Last week, Dr. Jennifer Raebold and I attended the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Annual Executive Institute for three days. I'll share some information about one of the keynote speakers and then the workshops that I attended over the course of the three days, and then Dr. Raebold will do the same at the podium for the other keynote speaker and those workshops that she attended. The title of this year's institute was Looking Ahead: Promoting Equity Wellness, Academic Achievement, and a Culture of Care for All, with each day having a different theme connecting to this broader title. On Tuesday, the theme was Self-Care and Well-Being of Our Membership. It did not go unnoticed by MASSS that the last two years were most likely the most challenging professionally and emotionally for superintendents in the Commonwealth and their leadership teams. The first two keynote speakers were Dr. John Daria, a former superintendent and current university professor, and Dr. Rob Evans, who is a renowned Massachusetts-based psychologist and school consultant. Each of them had a wealth of knowledge to impart to us, particularly around the importance of leaders, understanding and acknowledging their own emotions during difficult times. The workshops that I attended on the first day addressed the importance of sharing and celebrating our successes as superintendents, along with coping strategies that worked for us and other mechanisms that really helped us to move forward. I also intended, attended an operational session about the educator licensure regulations and procedures provided by the Department of Education. This focused on the emergency licensure, as well as some other changes, and things that were updates for all superintendents to know. The next day, we had a roundtable meeting with superintendents from our neighboring districts, and our roundtable is called the Old Colony Superintendent's Roundtable, where we discuss the meeting schedule and the professional learning topics for the year. This is a great opportunity for superintendents to get together and do some professional learning, kind of like our extended workdays or our PD days for our staff, something similar for superintendents. Another workshop session that I attended and found to be really valuable was around one district's creation of a pre-K to 12 multi-tiered system of support to build academic and social emotional coherence and success. This was very helpful to hear about how the superintendent and his leadership team gained buy-in from educators and families to make meaningful improvements to student achievement and well-being through SEL. So now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Raebold, and she will tell you a little bit about what she experienced.
Thank you. Thank you. So there was a kind of an assistant superintendent's and director's track that I attended some of the workshops there. One was called Promoting an Equitable PLC That Creates a Culture of Care for All. One was called Differentiating PD for Our Educators. And one that was particularly useful was Challenges in Leading Districts in High-Quality Curriculum Adoption. And these were run kind of as EdCamp, which is, it's not necessarily one presenter, you know, presenting for the whole hour, but a presenter who presents an idea or a question or some, a set of questions, and then everyone in the room kind of contributes their own experience, and that was really useful to talk about how other districts have adopted curriculum and what the challenges of that are. The second day of the institute, we had a keynote, which was really exciting. Ibram X. Kendi from Boston University was our speaker, and he was really amazing. The thing that was a little bit sad is that he had to have security with him, I guess because the work that he does is dangerous to a lot of people. So that was something that was a little bit, give us all a little bit of pause. He just talked a little bit about different policies to really reconsider from an anti-racist perspective, particularly around responses to misbehavior and cultural responsiveness with that. I really loved that his whole presentation was full of hope. One of the quotes that I wrote down from him was that "Hope is critical because you have to believe that change is possible," which I loved. He also had a challenge for us in Massachusetts. He said, "We need to be thinking about how can Massachusetts serve as a beacon, as a model of what a state can do to create anti-racist education, that we have that responsibility, given that we do have a lot of support in the state, and we need to recognize the power that we have as a state." After he spoke, we had a kind of a panel discussion with two superintendents and two students, which was really wonderful to hear that student voice, which was really great. Two quotes that I have, one was from the superintendent of Everett, and I don't know if you've seen Everett in the news lately, but they've been at kind of the center of a lot of change, cultural change. She is the first superintendent of color in Everett, and it has been a bit challenging for her. And she, her comment was, "Your sacrifice needs to match your privilege." And she said, "And we need to think about how, in the positions that we're in, we all are privileged in some ways, some more than others." And then a student from Mashpee, who was just the most amazing speaker, her name was Skylah, her comment that I loved was, "The strongest anti-racist work that you can do is love." And then we had some work. The Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents has been working on a whole program called Ready, which stands for Racial Equality Diversity and Inclusion, and they have kind of a playbook that we are going to be investigating a little bit more. And then I went to a wonderful workshop after that called From Valuing DEI Diversity Equity and Inclusion to Effective Leadership Practices and Strategies. And they asked a few questions that I thought were really meaningful, and I will continue to think on. How to lead others, how do we lead others to have courageous conversations under dangerous circumstances? What is the work of an educational leader when equity is at the center? And do all students have access to high-quality instruction materials and high-performing educators? And to be really self-critical with those questions. So it was, it was a great, I think, start for a new year, and it was, it was wonderful to be at not just a virtual workshop or conference, but to actually do a lot of networking with colleagues and just sharing great ideas. A lot of the lunchtimes were spent talking to colleagues and sharing ideas and strategies. So, yeah. Any questions?
Great, thank you.
I have a couple of additional pieces to tell about the last day, just to kind of finish things up. So the last day was called Moving Forward, which was meaningful because we've talked about what has gone on during COVID and last year, which was coming out of COVID, or at least we think coming out of COVID. We're not entirely out just yet. But, but it was really helpful to enjoy ourselves in the last day. They, MASSS treated us to comedian Jimmy Tingle, who really lifted our spirits and made us, gave us lots of things to think about and laugh about. And he did talk about what it was like during the pandemic for him, but also what he perceived from us, and how he thought it was difficult, the difficulties that we went through, and we had a really good laugh because humor is so important, along with all of the rest that comes with leadership, and humor has to be present in order to keep going. We also heard from a panel of student leaders who are part of Project 351, which is, you may have heard us speak about this before. It's a diverse student leadership group with one representative from each of the 351 school districts in the state. Nantucket has had a leader, had a Project 351 representative, and we hope that we will continue to have that student go and be part of this leadership group. It is really what worked and didn't work in the last few years, particularly around diversity, equity, and inclusion. So that was really meaningful to hear them telling us what they thought needed to happen. So it's good to have that student voice always present. And so again, thank you very much for supporting us in being able to go to an opportunity like this. I hope to be able to bring more of the central office directors to come. Jennifer was available, the others weren't available, but I'm hoping next year we can have a few more come. It is really a great opportunity for them, so, and for me, of course. So thank you. I can continue, or we can ask questions, whatever, Lucky?
Yes, I have a question. The Project 351, how would a student be nominated for that?
The nominations actually go through at the middle school to start, and then there's training and an opportunity to be part of a Project 351 assembly that I think goes over the course of a couple of days, so.
So are these middle school students? I didn't get the age bracket you were speaking about.
So they really actually run the gamut. Once you're in Project 351, you end up staying, if you wish to, as a representative. And so there were people who were ninth graders, eighth graders going into ninth grade. There were some who were freshman, I mean, 11th graders going into 12th grade. So it's really, it really depends. And it's, it's, again, just a great leadership group, and they have done a lot of good work around moving, moving student voice up to the forefront, which is really important, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Tim? Is there more?
No questions?
I'm just going back onto the Project 351. So do you have one student per school district?
Yes.
That attends, okay, so we've had the same student attend for a while?
I haven't followed through, Tracy will know.
Thank you, so that was Tracy Malo, in case the TV didn't pick that up. We do have a school representative that's in eighth grade, and they're nominated through the staff, if I'm hearing it rightly, and they go through the school year. I would love at some point to have a presentation from, from that student. And to, I'd like to, you know, I think, and if the committee agrees, I think it'd be great for us to hear about their experience and some of the things that they may be bringing back to the district and how we can support them.
Sure.
I mean, I concur, this is the first I've ever heard of it.
Yeah.
It's like Area 51.
Not quite.
Quite different.
And that's fine, that's fine, but if you, we can do more if we know more.
One of the things that Project 351 has been working on, and I really like it and would like to make sure we try to bring it to our school system, is the NBA playbook. There is a series of student-led, peer-to-peer opportunities to learn about racism and to learn about how to, how to fight racism and things that are, you know, perceptions that students may be feeling and, or maybe bringing to the table. So it's really very well put together. There's a training, there's, there are training sessions, and you can have, the idea is to train the upperclassmen to then come into the, the middle school and do things during, like an extended homeroom or an advisory period in order to allow for more understanding and awareness around racism, anti-racism, and diversity, equity, inclusion, so.
Well, the reason why I bring it up, we're on the diversity committee, are we, Esmeralda? This is the first I'm hearing of it, which is kind of like, why haven't we heard this from the jump? Being you and I on this diversity committee, and it's, that's my fault and your fault, and I'll take the blame on that, just not following through on that, but I, I hear what you're saying, but we should know more about this, you know what I mean? I should hear about this in July.
If I may, through the chair, Project 351 has only shifted its focus on, on the latest, in most recent years. It was not necessarily focused on DEI. It was more about just bringing student voice to the forefront, so. Yes.
So maybe what we can suggest or ask for is to have the diversity committee meet with you, and, and if it's coming through the middle school, then with Mrs. Malo or Mr. Horton or Ms. Lombardi, so that we can learn a little bit more, and then as you said, we can, we can support more once we know about it. But it sounds like some good work is being done.
Yes.
You good?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I'll continue. The hiring process, so as, as was to be expected, we have undergone some further shifts in staffing with some additional resignations and retirements. We currently have 18 positions still open, but we are getting closer to filling them, which is very encouraging. We are still searching, however, for qualified candidates in high school math, school psychologists, social workers, and adjustment counselors, and along with a few others. These are critical positions, and we are still not able to fill them. So I am doing basically anything I can to get the word out, looking at new job search engines, Monster, you know, monster.com, LinkedIn, anything at this point to try and see what we can find. We are concerned about TAs, as we have many positions to fill and very few applicants. We have had discussions with NTA leadership, and we are carefully examining the current TA contract to find ways to provide some incentives around time, meaning shortening the requirements around extended workdays and professional development. And we think that that might attract more people to the position because if they know that they can keep the schedule concurrent with their small children, perhaps they would be more willing to make the jump and, and join us as a TA. It is still only mid-July, so we are not yet in panic mode. The panic button hasn't been hit just yet, so. And I, like I said, we've had some very encouraging interviews and some, some things coming up soon. We are still looking for an EL director, and we do have a few, a few interviews coming up soon. So that as well is something that we are looking forward to hiring for. I can move on to enrollment unless there are any questions. So enrollment, so you will see that I provided a form that is not only the end of year, but also projected enrollment. Let me just get that out so we can all look at it. So, excuse me. We ended the year with 1,707 students, and we'll begin the year with 1,716 students. So we're seeing a very small increase. If you look at our enrollment chart here, you will notice that the Nantucket Intermediate School is gaining a class of fifth graders. So we did have to add in our, and that was in our budget, we knew this was coming, so we added a fifth grade teacher. But we do see our numbers slightly and slowly creeping up. We have not included our sped, excuse me, special education students in the projected enrollment, and we have not also totaled in all of our kindergarten yet. It's still coming, I mean, this is what we've got, but kindergarten is constantly coming in and enrolling. And also, we see multilingual learners coming year-round. So we assume that this number, 1716, 1,716, will go up. So something to keep our eye on as we move forward. Space is definitely something that we are concerned with. High school in particular is creeping up to almost 600, so it's something that we, we are aware of. So, and that's all I have for today.
Lucky, any other further up?
Yeah, through the chair. When, Ms. Kubish, when is the signup date for kindergarteners to sign up? Has it already passed?
There is no end date.
No deadline.
So it's rolling, and we did January, and then that's just like an informational. Then we did our screening day, May 11th, and then screening again June 17th, I think. And then, but so they just keep enrolling.
Right, one of my questions is, will there be another screening before the kindergarten kids are placed into their classrooms? Okay, if not, then will they be able to be moved out of their rooms and, and pieced? That's the wrong choice of words, but moved around? Because when I went to the schools last year, I found that there was a lot of kids in this one room, and maybe not as much in this room. But some of the TAs, I said, you know what, when the kids get comfortable with their surroundings and the teacher, the parents didn't want to move them. Is that correct?
So if I, can I just interrupt for a minute, if this is all right, to have you continue this conversation? Can I just ask you to come up, please, to the microphone? Thank you.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Can I have a cheerleader voice, I'm not loud enough from the audience?
Not for the TV audience. Thank you, Kim.
So the placement is very strategic, and it is based on what we know about students. And students who are coming with in-place IEPs go into certain rooms where TAs and special ed teachers are. At registration, we do tend to get that information, so we try to be strategic, as I said, about placement. We're at 112 right now, all placed, where they should be placed, based on all the information we have. And the difference between this year and last year is we have met and potentially screened more than 100 of the 112. So that's very different than what we had because of COVID last year. Any students with a language that is not English, they will go through a little screening to determine their level of performance for English-language learner support. But we will not be doing the screening that we did May 11th and June 17th or 20th. So we usually get a few kids between now and September, but they probably won't go through that level of screening.
Okay, I guess my question is, once they get into, after the first couple of weeks of school, are they allowed to move from room to room, once they get there? That's it? That's what they're there for the remainder of the year?
No, we will certainly make decisions about moving kids. We have done that before. Our staff feel very strongly, and that's part of responsive classroom. Nobody moves for the first six weeks because everyone needs to have the chance to adjust and learn their setting. So no one moves through the first six weeks. And then we can make moves that parents can come in and ask about, or teachers can share, or we can see for ourselves, like, wow, this child may be in a better spot in this room, or.
Thank you.
Does that answer it?
Yes, 100%, thank you very much.
Is there more, did you have any questions?
No questions.
Can I just ask about housing at the moment? Who is the point person for the district for connecting new candidates or current staff for housing?
Currently, it's myself and Katie Bedell. So the two of us are keeping track of, of people who are coming with needs, but also with offerings. So we have started to do a little bit of matchmaking. It's, it's a difficult process because everyone has very special needs, and then also the, those that are renting their, their properties have specific needs as well. So it's not easy, and with Katie being new in her position, and, you know, we are, we are, we're working to, to fill and to do that matchmaking as soon as possible, so.
Okay. I ask because a couple of people have reached out to me, and I was going to go and see a house today, but I don't want to step on anyone's toes, but I just didn't want you to be involved if it wasn't going to be something that was going to be helpful for the school, so.
I appreciate any assistance that anyone wants to give. So if, if there's something that comes up, or you hear from someone who might like to rent their house out or their cottage, and you want to do a screening of it, that's helpful to us because it's less of that that we would have to do.
Do you have current people who've been hired who are looking or waiting to be placed somewhere?
Correct, yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Tim, any other?
May I, may I add one more thing to the superintendent's remark? I wanted to give a very warm welcome to our new director of the Nantucket Community School, and that's Alicia Gracia Day, who is with us today. We are thrilled to have her.
Yes.
And so Alicia comes to us from the Nantucket New School and has already been in the job for a few weeks, and, and we are excited, actually, really, one week, right? So, but we are excited to have her on the leadership team, and we will be having a retreat, and she'll be our new member, so we'll have to give her a big welcome there, too.
Yeah. Welcome, that's great. Terrific, all right, well, moving on to presentations, this is my honor to ask Carlisle Jensen, who's the executive director for Egan Maritime, to come up. And I have heard Evan Schwalmfelder was joining you, but he's not, okay. So Carlisle is going to talk to us about the public programs that Egan Maritime has been supporting, I think, nine years. Long time.
Thanks to you.
Welcome.
Hi, hi, hello, everyone. It is an honor to be back here. A little fun fact, I was the student representative to the school committee from 2009 to 2011. So I've been here before, just never quite given the microphone. I also would really like to thank Pauline, she was the executive director at Egan prior to me, and she really laid the groundwork for everything that we're doing within the schools. And I would not be standing here if it wasn't for all the hard work that she did. Sadly, Evan's not able to be here, he was traveling back, and everyone knows how, what it's like to travel back to Nantucket, especially in July, so I'm sorry about that. So I just wanted to quickly go through some of the highlights from this last school year. Egan Maritime partners with the eighth grade to offer an oceanography course, and we were able to have a full in-person eighth grade class led by Lindsay Resick, which was phenomenal. I think we were, Evan was so happy to be back in the schools. We were so happy to be able to offer it to our students, and it was really wonderful. So a few highlights in the fall term. We really focused on harbor formation, ecology, invasive species, wetlands, ecosystems, and impacts of climate change on the environment. We partnered with the Pond Coalition, Land Bank, Land Council, and then the Natural Resources Department, and our number one goal was to get students outside of the classroom, in the field, and really learning with their hands. And after a couple of years on the screens, it was really important for us that our students got their hands dirty again. So that was really wonderful, and we're so grateful to the entire administration at the, at the middle school for helping this happen. In the spring term, we did a lot of work on weather and climate and ocean currents, which was really, really phenomenal, and included in all-class field trip to the shellfish hatchery. So again, another opportunity to get outside the classroom and really, really learn, learn about our maritime culture on the island. Finally, the spring term always includes the ever-famous cardboard boat race, which is truly one of the most fun events I've ever seen. And again, the entire staff at the Cyrus Pierce Middle School really helped out for that, as well as the folks at the community pool, so we're really grateful for that. And again, you know, students up in the balcony screaming and yelling is really nice to see, especially after, you know, sitting on a computer for a while. Egan also has a partnership with the Tall Ship Links, which is a wonderful partnership that allows for truly hands-on maritime education on the water in a really phenomenal tall ship. So we were able to take the entire third grade and the eighth grade class out for two-hour sails this spring. The eighth grade focused a little bit more on the science behind the harbor and did a little bit more of a discussion on, on kind of what they were seeing in the water and what it was like to, to sail a boat in this sort of climate, versus the third grade was doing more on Nantucket history. So we talked a little bit more about the history. was doing more on Nantucket history, so we talked a little bit more about the history of the island, so it was really nice again to, to get our students out and the staff is so phenomenal. We also had two successful eighth grade trips, where we had seven students join the links and go out for three days, two, two nights, they went, one group went to Woods Hole and one group went to Martha's Vineyard. I apologize, one student came back a pirate, it was not our fault, he just embraced his natural, his natural selves, and it was just really phenomenal to see them from the first day at orientation of, you need to bring a dry sack, to meeting them as they were coming off the, coming off the boat and, you know, with calluses on their hands and, and really, really got to do something special, so we're really happy that we were able to offer that. Looking ahead, I'm sorry that Dr. Bardley and Mr. Horton are not able to be here, but we've been meeting quite a bit to talk about some curriculum changes and we're really looking forward to continuing our relationship with the schools and expanding what Egan Maritime is able to do beyond just the eighth grade, and thinking about students, you know, once they first get exposed in third grade, what happens next, and how can we continue to encourage students to think about careers in the maritime culture, to learn about the maritime culture, to remember we live on an island with a really deep maritime history, and using, using our resources as a tool to help enhance educational opportunities. We are also really, really excited that the Innovative Pathways Program is going to be off the ground and running, so Egan will have a role in the high school level, so we'll be offering a spring, the, the fall term is on, focused on environmental science and the spring term is going to be a technical course, so, and then in addition to that, we're going to be working to build some really important kind of internships to expose students who are going through those different steps, to say, maybe intern at the boatyard, maybe intern with Egan, really to think about, or maybe intern with the harbor master, to really think about, okay, we're learning these stuff in school, let's, let's do some practical learning and some experiential learning as well. So that's really exciting, and again, it's just continuing that thread from, you know, grade three when they're on the links for the first time, all the way up until grade, grade 12 when they're thinking about what's next. And then, you know, we also, also are thinking, particularly my focus and Evan's focus, is really what opportunities are there that Egan can expose and be a bridge to help our students learn about. Hiring is an issue, everyone's having staffing problems, but particularly, you know, the boatyards, the steamship, people who are, you know, working, working on the water, fishermen, anything, any sort of career that's in the maritime culture. So Evan and I are thinking about ways in which Egan can help expose students who are interested and bridge, be that bridge to help them get from A to Z, so. Otherwise, we have a great summer happening, we have public programs happening at the museum all the time, we're really trying to take the, kind of the model that Pauline and Evan so beautifully built within Sea of Opportunities and bring it to the whole community. We have free public programs, educational programs, Monday through Friday at the museum from 10 to 4, anyone's welcome, anything that's outside not in the museum is 100% free, so we encourage anyone to stop by and, and see what we're doing.
Rocky, any questions? Tim?
It sounds interesting and exciting.
Yeah, it is. Esmeralda?
No questions, just I'm fascinated.
Yes, well, if anyone wants to join us on a Links field trip, the more the merrier.
I was going to go Google.
Yes, of course, I can send some materials.
I, I just have one question, did you do a high school week?
We did not do a high school week this year, due to the schedule and the timing, the high school week was going to be during the last week of school, so we kind of pivoted and offered some day sales at the high school level, and we're hoping that with the new innovative partnerships, relationship, and having a real presence at the high school, that the high school sale will kind of gain traction and, and happen again.
Excellent, well, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Okay, we're at the point for committee discussions and votes to be taken. There's a wonderful donation in here from St. Kitty Head Golf Club for the Nantucket High School Gold Team in the amount of $25,000. May I please have an approval for the donation? I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Amazing. Approval donation, please, of the Stop and Shop to Adopt a Lunch program for $103. May I have a motion to accept?
Move approval.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. May I have an approval of the meeting minutes of June 21st?
Move approval.
Thank you, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, aye. And may I also have a approval, please, for the payroll and invoices?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, I didn't ask you yet. All in favor?
Aye.
Just livening up a little bit. Okay, so moving on for the agenda for the next meeting, July 26, we are going to have a workshop session, and Dr. Hallett will be presenting her evidence that we will be meeting on and...
So I did, I will be preparing and presenting and, and I certainly would love to hear from anyone if there's our specifics around what kind types of evidence you would like to see, so that's always helpful for me to have a guide.
But it's around those points.
The points that, yes.
That you presented?
The specific, yes, the focus indicators that I, that I sent. I can send that document again, if you remember in June, we had, I did send it just immediately after that, but I'm happy to send it a second time, so you'll be able to see the focus indicators that are included and certainly the evidence that I will share. I can do a self-evaluation as well, which is always helpful, so.
And I would say too, on your members, if you've got any questions prior to going into the workshop, feel free to reach out to either Tim or myself, and I will extend that to Laura as well, because obviously we want you to be as comfortable and, and as knowledgeable as you can prior to the workshop and especially feeling supported going into your evaluation before we present, you know.
Well, I'd like to extend all that to me again.
Sure.
To the peruse for...
Sure.
...then I'll be from you, and I'll go close to you.
That'd be great.
Please and thank you.
I just wanted to, to make a mention that Tim and I met with Beth on a couple of points, and we had a conversation with Beth to see if Tim and I, with the permission of the committee, to meet with Dr. Hallett and her leadership team, primarily principals during the summer, to talk about plans that the school has, has for next school year going in to address social and emotional support, but also around discipline and behavior. I think, you know, we're all in agreement that we cannot have our schools be violated, toilets blocked, other, you know, physical actions that are happening that are harming our schools, and, and I'm pretty sure it's a small group, but I think we need to be able, as a school committee, ask the question, how can we support our leadership team, how can we support what, you know, how are we moving forward and addressing this, and I, and I don't want to do that, you know, in a small group, I just think it's necessary for us to have that conversation.
I hear what you're saying, but why is it just you and you two, why isn't it the whole committee meeting with the principals?
Well, we, we could get to that, I think at the moment during summer, we thought...
I, I get what you're saying, Pauline, but I'm saying you, you guys, this is a school committee.
Mm-hmm, so you'd prefer to have it as a workshop?
I wouldn't, I don't think it's, so you two are meeting with the leadership, but what about the rest of the three of us?
So what we were thinking, or what we had discussed, is that we would come back and report to the committee?
I don't feel comfortable with that.
Okay, so we'd have to, it would be a public meeting, but we could do a workshop. So then, would you be able to arrange with the principals a time?
So we need to look at the calendar and add a workshop then, if it has to be something in August, it's going to be challenging simply because we have vacations, it's a public meeting now, it has to be a workshop, not a, not a, a full meeting, because it, that entails not being able to, that's presentational, so.
Right.
We'll, we'll look at the schedule, we'll, I'll speak with the principals and we'll try to, to do that. I, I, I'm not sure we'll be able to get it in, in August, but we can try.
I didn't see it, honestly, it's not scripted.
And the structure of, of the school committee, then we just need to make it a public meeting, that's all, so we can do that.
Well, you made it public when you brought it up.
And I know that, that's why I wanted to bring it up, to, to inform...
Right.
...the conversation, but I think if it's something that we all will be...
Well, how do you feel, Esmeralda?
I'm okay with it, personally, I would be fine if they were, they were to meet and report back to me.
If I may, it's common that these types of things happen through, through subcommittees, if we wanted to create a behavioral subcommittee, we certainly could do so, in which case then it becomes a report back, just as we do with other, other subcommittees, so.
Well, through the chair, I don't want to create another subcommittee, but I just want to be involved with what's going on with the principals.
Okay, so then, then I would ask if you could set up a time for a workshop in August, and if it cannot be in August, then it would need to be once school's open?
I don't want to, I don't want to slow the process down, though, okay? That's, that's the last thing I wanted to, so I'm just, so I want to be involved a little bit more.
Well, let's see what, what Beth can, can come up with as far as everybody's schedule, because what I'm hearing is many people are taking their vacations in, during that month.
People are taking vacation between when we meet for school committee on the 9th and the 23rd, so it's, it's, it's a busy time, I'm not sure we'll be able to get everybody together, but we can certainly try.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or, Rocky?
No, ma'am.
Tim? Beth, any other?
I just wanted to mention one thing, thank you, we, you will see in your packet, we actually had minutes for June 14th that needed to be approved, but because they did not get on the agenda, small error on our part, we will move that for a vote to approve on August 9th.
August 9th, oh, yes, because it's a workshop on the 26th.
So we will, they're in the packet, but we'll, we'll put them back in the packet for the August 9th meeting.
Okay. And the workshop will be here in the L G I?
We can find a, a different location if we wish.
Okay.
Certainly we could have it, there are various places, the conference room, but we'll find a location.
Okay, and that, just remind me, that's at 6:00 or is it 5:00?
It'll be at 6:00, unless we want to change it to 5:00, at the moment we, we have not determined the time, it's up to you how you'd like to do that.
6:00 works for me.
Yeah.
I'm 5:00 and 6:00.
Okay, we'll keep it at 6:00. Great, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everyone.